So. As I said, this is the public, virtual public hearing for the proposed rule for the Agency of Agriculture, Food and Markets for Best Management Practices. For the use of neonicotinoid treated seed, neonicotinoid pesticides. What we're going to do is we'll do a brief overview of the proposed rule. Then we'll have an opportunity for people that if they have any questions, just to understand the rule better. And then we will take public comment. We're asking that you raise your hand. We'll take the comments in the order that you raise your hand. And then we'll ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. If at the end of the list of folks who commented for three minutes, there's still time, we can expand that and go on to additional comments. So. With that. Zach, you want to go ahead and just do, well, let me give you a brief, a brief intro, I guess. So this is a set of rules or set of best management practice, recommended best management practices that are being proposed by the agency. They were developed based on recommendations from the Agricultural Innovation Board, which is an advisory committee to the agency. The members of the Agriculture Advisory Board or Agriculture Innovation Board, excuse me, are appointed by the secretary. We've had a series of public meetings going back to 2023 to discuss these best management practices. These best management practices are being proposed as a result of the direction by the General Assembly to develop best management practices for the use of neonicotinoid treated seeds and neonicotinoid insecticides. I think that's probably a good enough basic introduction. And this is a chance to provide public comment. There'll be four additional chances. We have four additional public hearings coming up. And we also have the opportunity on our website, there is a public comment opportunity on the website. You can click on it and send an email, a comment, and that will be open until September 11th for additional public comment. So with that, Zach, you want to go ahead and introduce yourself and, you know, share your screen and do a brief introduction on the proposed rule?
Sure thing. And thank you for the introduction, Steve. My name is Zach Shikowski. I'm an Agrochemical Program Manager with the Public Health and Agricultural Resource Management Division with the Vermont Agency of Agriculture Food and Markets. So Steve took over for the introduction. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through this, this presentation regarding the proposed rule. And then that's, as Steve alluded to as well, we're going to be following that with a brief Q and A. And then once the Q and A is up, we will be opening it up for public comments. And with that, I will go ahead and get started. Yeah, so introduction's already been taken care of more or less, but just kind of go over through this brief outline. Background a little bit, and then to do a section by section review, followed by a summary and next steps, as well as the closing, which we'll, at that time, open it up for the Q and A and the public comments. Okay, so pesticide laws and regulation, just briefly, there's the federal insecticide, Fugicide and Rodenticide Act. That's kind of the overarching national law. And then in Vermont, we have six VSA chapters, 81, which deals with registration at 87, deal of use, in addition to the Vermont Rule for Control of Pesticides. Specific to this, there, the neonicotinoid legislation in 2022, Act 145 was passed, which directed the Agency of Agriculture in consultation with the Agricultural Innovation Board to develop best management practices for the use of neonicotinoid treated article seeds. And then more recently, as of last year, Act 182 was passed, which, among other things, directed the Agency of Agriculture to develop BNP's for neonicotinoid pesticides in addition to the treated article seeds. So with that, I'm just going to go ahead and jump right into the sectional review of the rule. So this isn't a overly complex rule. There is a total of six sections. We'll be spending time on sections one through four primarily. And with that, I am moving on. Okay, so Section 1, this deals with enabling legislation as well as the purpose of these best management practices. And which the purpose is that these be recommended practices. The fact that this is recommended practices as opposed to more mandatory requirements is in alignment with the Agricultural Innovation Board's recommendation that further research was needed on what is driving pest pressures, potential off-target movement, as well as a traditional understanding of what exactly a BMP is. Proposed rule is meant to be, as such, recommended best practices to be used whenever is reasonable and practical. And to the right there, you will see a snippet from statute, and that provides the directive under C1 for the agency to adopt by rule BMPs. And then it goes on to list the several enumerated items, which this rule does. And you may note that above, there's a differentiation between what is referred to as the best manager practices in contrast to something other, such as a standard procedure or requirement. Definitions, most of these terms in this rule, the proposed rule, are essentially references to other codified definitions either provided in statute or rule. The pesticide Vermont Regulation or Rule for Control of Pesticide is, you know, often quoted in the proposed rule. The only ones that are really different are ones that we needed to amend a little bit to incorporate neonicotinoid treated article seeds. So you'll see that, you know, container means a device in which a neonicotinoid treated article seed or a neonicotinoid pesticide is stored, transported, disposed of, or otherwise handled. Similarly, label or labeling means, in addition to the normal stuff, you will see added to this a reference with a neonicotinoid treated article seed label. And then lastly, just another example, loading, in this case, means any act of transferring a neonicotinoid treated article seed or a neonicotinoid pesticide to or from any storage container or planter. So Section 3, Section 3 is the primary section that's going to be dealing with the best management practices for the use of neonicotinoid treated article seeds. This will be followed by the BMPs for the neonicotinoid pesticides. So here we have the applicability section, Section 3.01. And here it says that the provisions of this section apply to the use of neonicotinoid treated article seeds when used prior to January 1st, 2031, and when used under a valid exemption order issued by the secretary unless otherwise provided for in an exemption order. So below is a snippet also from statute, and you will see that it says right there, January 1st, 2031, and that, that's really the only reasoning for us, including that date, and for all practical purposes. The other, the other date, you know, the ban goes into effect in 2029, but this rule should be in place by then, and it shouldn't have any effect. In addition, I just wanted to note that, you know, as it says at that end of the sentence, unless otherwise provided for in an exemption order. So the agency, the secretary is able to issue exemption orders for the use of neonicotinoid treated article seeds under certain conditions, provided those are met. And the idea here is that some of these could be put into an exemption order as a requirement. So general, Section 3.01 simply states that a person who uses a neonicotinoid treated article seed should adhere to label requirements. And that where provisions of this rule conflict with label language, the label language applies. Following up, it's just more on label guidance, is that a person using a neonicotinoid treated article seed should follow the directions and requirements on a neonicotinoid treated article seed bag, including proper handling, storage, use, disposal, recommended rate and depth of planting, as well as any hazard statements related to pollinators. Moving on to Section 3.04, we have the dust and non-target exposure mitigation. This includes practices to reduce dust generation and potential non-target exposure, as the title indicates, such as users should avoid windy conditions, especially if the direction is towards flowering crops or surface water. Reduce dust generation by handling the bags carefully. Using and using a dust-reducing seed lubricant. Calibrate the equipment properly. Avoid or reduce releasing excess dust from the seed bag, including by loading planters at least 10 yards inside field borders. And clean planting equipment without using compressed air. Continuing on with the dust and non-target exposure mitigation, we have clean planting equipment without contaminating surface water, groundwater, and pollinator attracted plants. Dispose of excess rinse water from cleaning within the crop field and without causing surface ponding. Do not broadcast plants or scatter seeds to soil surfaces. And then ensure all planted seeds are thoroughly incorporated during planting and evaluate whether additional incorporation is necessary after initial planting to thoroughly cover any exposed seeds. Lastly, collect any seeds spilled during loading or planting and store them for subsequent planting in accordance with Section 3.07, which deals with storage or disposal of any seeds spilled during loading or planting in accordance with Section 3.08, which deals with disposal. Section 3.05 provides integrated pest management, EMPs related to neonicotinoid treated article seeds. For example, use other practices to reduce risk of pest damage. Choose the lowest appropriate rate of Munich that will effectively manage the target pest. And then learn which crop practices, production practices increase or reduce risk of insect pest damage. So here we have Section 3.06, which deals with communication and continuous education. This is somewhat of a modification of what is currently in the Vermont Rule for Control of Pesticides. Except for this isn't related to, obviously, seeds. A says that a person using a neonicotinoid treated article seed should provide at least 48 hours, but no more than 90 days, advance notice to all apiculturists who have an established apiary on the premises, provided at high locations, and the apiculturist's contact information are available to the person using a neonicotinoid treated article seed. So that's an apiculturist who is on the property will should receive notification, provided that the person using the seed has both the location and their contact information. Subsection B here, this, this was added after discussions with the Department of Environmental Conservation. And this provides that a person using a neonicotinoid treated article seed should provide at least 48 hours, but no more than 90 days, advance notice to public water systems managing public water sources, provided that contact information is available through the Agency of Natural Resources, Department of Environmental Conservations, Trinking Water and Groundwater Protection Division, and neonicotinoid treated article seeds are used within 200 feet of a public community drinking water source and public drinking water, surface water intakes, or 100 feet of public non-community drinking water sources. This is similar language, at least in part to what is already contained in the Vermont Rule for Control of Pesticides as well. At least the terminology. Lastly, a person using a neonicotinoid treated article seed should attend reasonably available education and outreach programs, including those provided by university extension services or the seed industry related to best manager practices for using neonicotinoid treated article seeds. Section 3.07 deals with storage. A person using the Munich treated article seed should, A, return the Munich treated article seeds that are spilled during loading or planting to the original seed lot container. Store the Munich treated article seeds away from food, feed, and drinking water sources. And lastly, protect and secure neonicotinoid treated article seeds to prevent unauthorized access by people and wildlife. Lastly, we have Section 3.08, which deals with disposal. And that provides that unless seeds are being used for storage in accordance with Section 3.07, a person using a neonicotinoid article seed should dispose of the seeds and/or containers in accordance with the seed bag label and local requirements, or by returning to the manufacturer. Further, a person using a neonicotinoid treated article seed should not recycle the seed container, compost, the seed or container, burn or otherwise incinerate any treated article seed in a stove inside a residence or outbuilding, and should not use a treated seed for fuel or ethanol production purposes. As I mentioned earlier, we are moving on to Section 4, which deals with the best manager practices for the use of a neonicotinoid pesticide. And similar to Section 3, we begin with the applicability station, section. And so A provides that, you know, the provisions of this section apply to the use of neonicotinoid pesticides used after July 1st, 2025, under a written exempt, under a written exemption order issued by the secretary unless otherwise provided for in an exemption order. Again, similar to the neonicotinoid treated article seeds. If an exemption order were to be granted, which I just want to note that the bar is extremely high. It needs to be either in agricultural emergency or environmental emergency, both of which, again, it's a very high bar, but nonetheless, I just wanted to note that some of these BMPs provided in here could theoretically be placed in an exemption order or want to be issued. Moving on to B, subsection B, provisions of this section apply to agricultural use of a neonicotinoid pesticide after July 1st, 2025, the use of which is not otherwise prohibited by law. And lastly, subsection C writes that, in addition to the provisions of the section, any use of a neonicotinoid pesticide shall be made in accordance with product labels and the Vermont Rule for Control of Pesticides. Again, I stated at the beginning, the Vermont Rule of Control of Pesticides is the applicable rule regulation for pesticide use in the state of Vermont. In addition to product labels as a federal matter. Moving on to Section 4.02, we have integrated pest management related to neonicotinoid pesticides. And that a person using a neonicotinoid pesticide should implement integrated pest management practices, including learning which crop practices, including crop variety selection, crop rotation, whether to increase or reduce the risk of insect pest damage. Scout crops regularly, use economic thresholds to help determine if, when, and where to apply. Utilize multiple pest management methods, such as cultural, mechanical, biological, to avoid or reduce pest risk whenever feasible. Use perimeter trap crop treatments, refuge plantings, and other methods that prevent the entire field or population from being treated to help preserve susceptible non-target species.
Yeah, I agree.
Continuing on. We have subsection E, so these are further IPM BMPs. Choose the lowest appropriate labeled application rate that can effectively manage target pests without overapplication or risking increased insecticide resistance. Time applications to target the most vulnerable life stage of the target pest. And lastly, target applications to specific areas of a crop or field utilizing spot spraying, directed sprays, and banned applications based on scouting. Drift prevention. Section 4.03. Sorry about that, folks. I might have lost you for a second, but I think everything's okay. 4.03, drift prevention. A person using a neonicotinoid pesticide should implement measures to reduce drift, including using a nozzle that produces medium or coarser droplet sizes. Apply during favorable weather conditions. Use a drift retardant or spray additive within label guidance. Use a shield sprayer, provided that the shield does not compromise uniform deposition. And then maintain at least a 25-foot spray buffer zone between the application area and surface water for ground applications. Let me continue with drift prevention here with subsection F. Maintain the following buffer zones for aerial applications. 100-foot spray buffer zone between the application area and surface waters. A 50-foot spray buffers in significant natural communities within the Champlain Valley, as mapped under Fish and Wildlife and the NRAs. Subsection G. Maintain a boom height no more than four feet above the canopy for ground applications. H, comply with the Vermont Rule for Control of Pesticides and all applicable permit conditions for aerial application. Just to note here that any aerial application of any pesticide in the state is required to be done under a permit. And the agency has a permanent application process, as well as the ability to put conditions, additional conditions in that aerial permit. Subsection. Oh, wow. L, I forgot my ABCs. Spray when wind direction is pointed away from non-target areas of concern, such as pollinator attracted plants, surface waters, and drinking water sources. Lastly, ensure that application equipment is calibrated and functions properly. We have Section 4.05, which deals with runoff prevention. And here, a person using a neonicotinoid pesticide should implement measures to prevent runoff and groundwater infiltration, including avoid applications during rain or when soil is saturated. Avoid foliar applications if rain is predicted in the next 24 or 48 hours. Avoid disposal of leftover pesticide in a single spot in a field. Maintain grass or vegetative buffers near tile outlets and drainage ways and along field boundaries, as well as implement residue management practices such as conservation tillage, cover crops, filter strips, or vegetative buffers as applicable to slow runoff. Pollinator protection. Section 4.06. Here, we have a person using the Munich pesticides, implement measures to prevent exposure to pollinators, including avoid applications during unusually low temperatures or when dew is forecast. Communicate with apiculturists and growers to determine the presence of potential hives or colonies on site. Follow label restrictions for the maximum amount of neonicotinoid allowed per acre, per application, per season, or per year. Consider that neonicotinoids applied as seed treatments count towards maximum application rates. And then minimize potential uptake of neonicotinoids by leaving a buffer strip of two to three feet between neonicotinoid treated turf and any naturally occurring native plants, including grasses and sedges, or any other flowering plants or crops. And here you can see the existing language in Section 5.04 of the Vermont Rule for Control of Pesticides. And this language is currently in effect. Mandatory was the consensus from the 2017 Pollinator Protection Report. Just wanted to add that. Yeah, so, you know, in summary, these are statutorily required best management practices. Concerns over non-target effects of both neonicotinoid treated article seeds and neonicotinoid pesticides. This, this rule seeks to establish BMPs for their use in the state of Vermont. And the agency is following that statutory mandate. It covers both the treated article seeds as well as the pesticides. And as Steve alluded to earlier, this is the first of five public hearings. And at which time, seven days following the last public hearing, I think I gave an extra day. Public comment ends on September 11th. And from there, the agency will be compiling all comments received. And then issuing a public comment response summary. And then further filing, making any changes based on those public comments that we agency receives. And then filing with the Secretary of State, a final proposed rule, as well as with the Legislative Committee on Administrative Rules. So timeline, roughly sometime in the fall is what we're looking at. This is just a review of the administrative rulemaking today. And an overview of the public hearings that the agency will be holding. Knowing that the 5pm on the St. Albans one is incorrect, that will be going to 6:30. As I alluded to, we wrote ahead is the continuation of the public comment period. Continuing to review comments that we receive and analyzing those, filing the final proposed rule, attending LCAR, and ultimately divided talk as well, adoption of the rule. And with that, we are directing people to submit comments to Farm, the Public Health and Agricultural Resource Management is the acronym there, rules. This is what, you know, this is, it's a rule, at vermont.gov. And with that, Steve. And with that, um, Steve, unless you have any further comments, I think, uh, we can go ahead and. At least begin, uh, Q and A, but when you have any questions.
Yeah. Well, thank, thank you, Zach. Thank you for that overview of the proposed rule. Um, to reiterate, the process at this point, we will ask for clarifying questions, not, not comments per se. But if anyone has any specific questions, uh, about, uh, the rule. Language that Zach just went over, we'll entertain those for a few minutes and then we'll. Begin taking public comment, uh, you know, in the order of, of the hands that are raised. And I'd ask, uh, you keep your comments to three minutes to give everybody, uh, at least an initial opportunity to make comments if we have time. In the hearing after that initial round, then we'll, uh, you know, take additional comments. So. With that, first of all, does anybody have any clarifying questions about the rule language? Uh, Zach, why don't you go and stop sharing. Your screen for now. Um. We have more. Room to see people. Um, so, uh, any, anybody have any questions they want to ask about the language of the rule before we get into the comment period? Uh, don't see any hands going up. Uh, and again, if you, if you think of a question later, just raise your hand, we'll, we'll put it in there. So. Uh, with that, uh, who would like to, uh, offer any public comment? On the proposed rule? It's a public comment opportunity. So. If you have no comments, that's fine, but. That's what we're here for.
Okay, raise my hand.
Okay. Mr. Nelson.
Thank you. Thank you, uh. Mister D'Vanel. On, uh. Drinking water sources. Does that? Not apply to private. Artesian wells? Uh. Or does it? Or is it just? For. The other types of drinking sort, the water sources that were offered.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll, uh, take a crack at it. Zach, you jump in there, but this was language that was requested to be added by the Department of Environmental Conservation. Uh, specifically for public and community drinking water systems for notification.
Yeah. Correct, so, but that's, um, representing us, that's, that would not include, uh, portable water sources, private wells.
Okay. And, uh. The apiaries. The hives. That's, and it said on the premise.
Yes, sir.
So. On the premise mean on the edge of the cornfields?
Is on the, on the property of the person making the application.
On the property of the person making the application.
Yes.
All right.
That's, that's, and that's, that's similar to the rule language that's in five point oh four. Which, you know, requires notification under some conditions to apiaries on the property of the person making the application.
So. If a farmer has no. Beehives on his farm.
Right.
He do, he doesn't have to make notice to anybody.
That's the way the rule is written.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, for folks who just joined or joined recently, this, we're in a public comment period, we're asking folks to raise their hands to make a public comment. And, uh, limit your comments to three minutes, at least on the initial round of commenting. No comments. It'd be a short. Comment. Response summary, right? Zach.
We got four more.
Yeah, four more of these.
And, um. It's helpful, I can, I can go ahead and, and put the address in, you know. In the chat. Steve, please, that's.
Sure. Yeah, so if you, if you don't have comments right now, you know, you're still digesting the rule, the language of the rule. Uh, there'll be, you know, four additional. Public hearings. Uh, which to make comment and, um, an opportunity to submit written comments. Uh, that's open until September eleventh. Uh, on our website and our email.
And if anybody wants me to pull up any specific, um, language. From the rule, I'm happy to do that, just. Please raise your hand and. Go for it.
Well, I was curious to see how this was going to come off. And. I can see this is another one of those attempts to. Trying to do something that the farmers. Have to go to an extra effort to provide the food that we all eat. I know everybody likes to eat every day, but. I'll attend the rest of the meetings. But right now I'm more information gathering than anything. To see what sentiment is, what people have to say. I see people on here that it says unverified on the names. And. It's a funny thing. When a farmer does. The things that the farmers do. To have someone come along and criticize. Or pick it apart to the point where that. It puts it in a context that doesn't make sense to the farmer at all. I know we're all going to want to eat tomorrow night, and the next day, and the next day. But wish we'd keep that in mind a little bit before we get too far down the road. We don't even know how many species that we're dealing with. As far as neonicotinoids. And. How do you prevent a problem if you don't know? What's involved in the problem? So we'll get started. And hopefully, common sense will prevail. And hopefully, people will recognize that it's important that we all eat every day. I guess that's all I'd say at this point. Uh. Hi, Steve.
All right, tha- thank you for your comment. Oh, I'm sorry, didn't mean to cut you off.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Uh. So I'm going to go along tonight, uh. Is our anniversary and, uh, we've been together forty-nine years and probably I should, uh. Grace the table with my presence, huh? So have a good evening, folks, and, uh, we'll see you next meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Ms. Teth.
Hi, this is really a meeting for my husband to be at, but I'm here. So just a clarifying question. Um, these best management practices are until. These pesticides are completely banned in the state of Vermont, is that correct?
Uh, no.
Or if there is a special emergency approved reason. These would also need to be followed.
Yeah, well, let me, let me clarify that a little bit. So there are two parts to the two. Areas that the rule addresses. One is the use of treated seeds, seeds treated with neonicotinoid pesticides. And pesticides, the use of the neonicotinoid. Insecticides themselves, okay? The neonicotinoid-treated seeds, the use of those seeds. Is prohibited effective January first, twenty twenty-nine. So the rule applies. Uh. Up until the time of the prohibition for the use of those seeds. Or. If there's an exemption granted, so after twenty twenty, after January first, twenty twenty-nine, the secretary can grant an exemption to allow the kid, allow the use of the untreated, of the treated seeds. In which case these, uh, BNP's would be applicable. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Okay, and then for the insecticides themselves. It applies. Um. For all those uses that are not otherwise prohibited, there's a set of uses of the neonicotinoid insecticides that were prohibited. Or are prohibited effective July first of this year. And, uh, those include use on soybeans and grains, outdoor applications, soybeans and grains. Uh, applic- outdoor applications to ornamental plants. Applications to certain vegetables. And I think there's one more. What am I missing, Zach? There's one more use. That's prohibited.
Flowering crops, ornamentals.
Flowering crops, right. Yeah, a- any flowering crop. So, yeah, there are four, four uses. So the insecticides themselves are not banned. Uh, or the registrations are canceled. It's just those specific uses are prohibited effective July one.
Okay, so when.
Go ahead, sorry.
When treated seeds are no longer allowed to be used.
Right.
In Vermont. Has anybody thought forward as to what we're supposed to do if we're not an organic farm? Uh, like I said, this is my husband's area, so he might know the answers already, but. Is there an alternative? Our seed company is going to say, oh, Vermont, you're so small, we don't really care, this is all we offer. And what is the farmer supposed to do? Like, has there been any forethought or planning ahead? Like, what do we do then? So great, we have time until the twenty twenty-nine, but then after that. What's supposed to happen?
Okay, so that is.
Have a ton of bees, but we're not going to be able to feed our cows because we can't grow our, I mean, has anyone had these thoughts? You must have. And what's the plan?
Okay, so this is an area that has, the agency has been giving a lot of thought to. In fact, we had a couple of meetings about it today. Uh, with seed companies, um, and it is an area of concern that what. Seeds will be available. After the, or. Will be avail, I mean, the, the reality is the, 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 um. Prohibition actually takes, starts to take effect in twenty twenty-eight because when the growers go to order the seed for the twenty twenty-nine planting. Season, that's when. Uh, farmers. Would not be able to. Uh, order neonicotinoid-treated seeds and they would have to seek some other type of seed. It's unknown. What seeds will be available. Um, at that time. Um, that's, uh, an area we're looking into with the seed companies and asking them those questions. Um. The preliminary answers we've gotten are. For some seed companies, they don't anticipate having many seeds available. Other. Seed companies say that they will provide seeds, although the selection may be limited. Uh, uh, other seed companies say they are exploring alternative treatments. Um. To, uh, provide some other types of seed treatments, other insecticides to protect the seeds. Um, and, you know, to point out there, you can buy untreated seed now. I mean, if you, you can, and there are growers who choose to use untreated seed. And so there are, um. Untreated seeds available on the marketplace now that farmers could choose to use. But as far as what will be available to farmers who are looking for specific. Genetic packages. Or specific types of, um, nutritional or. Uh, maturity dates. Uh, you know, when, when this starts taking effect in twenty twenty-eight, that's an unknown. Question, and we don't know the answer to that. That's what we're working toward. Trying to figure out.
Okay, which is very worrisome for the farmer.
Yeah, that is a worry, for sure.
Right, because if we're having to, if we're having to select seeds that probably are not our top choice and the production per acre is not what we want. We're also running up against the state rules that mandate X amount of houses be built in Vermont by X date, which is going to take up some of our land. So, I mean, there's opposing forces here, and I'm just hoping that. Different areas of the state government are speaking to each other and recognizing how those can be opposed and, and not work well together.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for your comment. And I hope I answered your question.
You did, for now, I mean, we don't know.
Right. Uh, Representative Nelson. Oh, you're muted, sir.
Thank you, Steve, and here I'm farmer Richard Nelson. Um. I regret, the, the long and short of it is between us and New York, both enacting bans the same year. We're about one point two percent of the national crop. Of corn. Uh, the national corn crop's over ninety-three million acres. And between us and New York, we're about one point. One million acres, maybe. So, uh. I don't expect Corteva, Bear, or Sendana to bend over backwards. To take care of one percent of the nation's corn crop. And in a year like this. Where not up here, we were lucky, but in a lot of places, there was a lot of seed swapping going on. And, um, right into June to shorten their days of. Days of, uh, maturity because they couldn't get on the ground when they wanted to. And that is going to lead to hardship. You're exactly right. And, um, these are all things that got to be looked at and thought of. Um. You know, dairy in the state of Vermont is a five-point-four billion dollar industry. All in, all said. So, uh. You, you do have a voice, we do have a voice, and we need to use it. Thank you.
Margaret, go ahead.
I was just wondering, I know there are untreated seeds, I am aware of that. Have there, has there been any look? At any results from these, the use of untreated seeds? Does anybody look at any data? In the process of making these rules and banning? These pesticides?
The. University of Vermont, Heather Darby is doing that research right now. And she may even be on this call, I think. Saw Heather pop up, not sure it was Heather Darby or not, but anyway, yeah, that research is going on as we speak.
But we must have some history, some historical research. There must be people out there, you said, that already buy. And not just the state of Vermont, I'm talking anywhere, New York, out west, that they buy. Untreated seeds and, and results of yields and things like that and pest pressure. Did anybody look at that information and see what potential decrease in? Production we might face before they went and made this rule?
Okay, well, first of all, the, this rule isn't the.
The law.
Yeah, it was the law that was enacted in twenty twenty four. There was quite a bit of testimony, actually, about yield differences between treated and untreated seed. Uh, primarily from a study that was done by Cornell University. Over several years. That included a lot of different types of soil conditions and growing conditions. We didn't have a lot of data from Vermont to provide in that. In the testimony, which is one of the reasons the research is being, being done now. Um, there are also, Canada has a. Had a neonicotinoid treated seed ban in effect. I forget how many years, quite a few years now. Uh, and they do have yield data that shows there's, uh, has been essentially no difference between the treated and untreated seed. But our concern at the agency is that that. Experience doesn't necessarily translate to Vermont. Because of the growing conditions, the reason we grow the corn for forage. And the, the fact that we encourage and promote. The use of manure applications to fields and the use of cover crops. Which increases the amount of decaying organic matter. Uh, in the fields, which is a risk factor for the pests that the seed treatments are designed to protect against. It's a complicated answer, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, I appreciate the information now. That's good to hear, good to know.
Yeah. But Dr. Darby is doing research on that right now and has been providing updates to the Agricultural Innovation Board on the results of that research. Any other comments on the proposed rule? More questions? Still got an hour to go, guys.
I went ahead and sent the email address in the chat as well.
Yeah, okay.
If people are more comfortable doing that.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. And we will.
Totally acceptable.
Yeah, we will. Read all the comments and include responses. And, you know, if you have a question after the fact, you know, you can always email us to go to our website. We have our email addresses there. Glad to. Answer questions folks have. Okay, for folks who joined recently, we were in a public comment period. If you have a. Comment on the proposed rule, we're asking you to raise your hand. And we'll take your comment.
Mr. Nelson, did you have a, a comment you wanted to make?
I have a feeling the in-person meetings might be more lively than this one. That's my comment.
Thank you for, thank you for your comment.
Yep.
We're, we're open that as well. We just thought we would provide a little. Diverse setting to begin with, and yeah, moving forward, every meeting will be in person, so.
Well. Hybrid.
And virtual, correct.
Yeah, they're all, yes, all the meetings are hybrid. So, you know, folks who can't get there in person can attend virtually. And will, you know, follow the same ground rules, basically. But we, you know, was obligated to keep the hearing open till seven. Folks aren't necessarily obligated to hang around unless you want to, but. Uh, we'll be here till seven to take public comment. And then again, all the comments that are received are recapitulated in the response summary. Which then is part of the. Process where we go to the Legislative Committee on Administrative Rules, you know, that's provided to them also. To, uh. Take a look at. Um, so I can see what the results of the public hearings were.
Steve, I'm starting to think I could go out back of the house and pick two gallons of blueberries in the next hour.
Okay.
And probably that's what I'm gonna do. Thank you. And Zach, thank you for holding this hearing. Appreciate it. I was hoping we'd have more engagement. Jared, I can't believe you didn't want to have a comment, but that's all right. And I am a representative to the town of Derby. For the town of Derby and. If anyone want to reach out to me, it's arnelson@ledge.state.vt.us. And we'll all work through this together.
Hello, hello, Representative, I mean Farmer Nelson, how are you, sir?
Very good, very good.
Listening in the, in tonight, sir. We're working on comments and they will be made in the future, but tonight it's a little, a little premature. We're still wrapping our head around it. But I hope you're doing well, sir.
All right, very good. Good to see you, Jared.
You as well.
All right, hey, good night, everybody. Have a great night. And, uh. I can assure you of the corn, well. I don't know if the corn will grow tonight, because it's all twisted up pretty tight right now and, uh. I'd at least like to see a dew in the morning. Um, cause that'll give us some moisture. And let's hope for the rain tomorrow night. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do the slideshow again, Zach. Practice.
Yeah, wear out my, uh. I'll do it if you, if you want me to.
No, I'm, I'm just kidding. Just stand by in case somebody suddenly wants to comment or someone joins us.
Yeah, um, I. I have headphones on, I, I might. No, I'll, I'll be here.
Yeah. It's part of the process. Think Dave told me that when they did the, um. The rule hearing for the. There was a four-hour hearing. For the, the pesticide rule. And which, nobody commented.
Remember. Need a couple of comments, um.
But not during the public.
It was long.
Yeah.
Yeah, not, not too many.
Yeah.
For four hours. Written is, is, is totally acceptable, so.
Yeah, no, it's part of the process, but we do. So it's fine. I don't have, I don't have blueberries to go pick, so.
I don't either.
All right, gents, I'm gonna take my leave as well.
Okay.
Good to see you all. Have a great evening and, um, yeah, we'll. We'll catch up later. Thanks so much.
If you have any questions while you're writing your comments, just holler.
Oh, absolutely.
If it speeds the process up, yeah, just, just let me know. Glad to, glad to answer any.
All right, thanks, Steve. I appreciate it. Have a great evening.
All right, you too. Thank you.
Take care.
Uh, Zach, let's talk about the Thursday meeting for a second, maybe?
Yeah, so the Thursday meeting will be in person, continuing at. Five P M in Virgens at the X P. Library.
And I mean, you got, you got everything you need for that in terms of.
Yeah, they have, they have all the stuff, yep.
Okay.
And then I just need to stop by and, um. Actually, I don't need speakers for that. No, they have everything.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'll be there too. Um, Dylan's gonna pick, come pick me up and drive me over there.
Wonderful.
Yeah. So.
And then, uh, Matt, I, 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 if you are there, but I guess Matt would be St. Albans and then. Jessica, yeah, got it right. Perfect.
Um, yeah, that St. Albans meeting, I'm not gonna be able to stay the whole time.
That's okay.
For the first part of it, at least.
Yeah.
I was gonna go to Virgens, but no, I think. I was gonna go to Virgens, but no, I think go to the St. Albans one.
Yeah, that'd be good. Jessica's will be the one at Pool and Grain, right, in Derby?
That, that's my understanding correct, yeah.
And then
Clark would be Bradleboro.
Clark will be Bradleboro, yeah.
Yep.
Roadshow, it's a roadshow. Oh, you know, one thing that I don't know if I mentioned this to you or not, and I think it was Stephanie's idea, if we had a QR code at the sign-in table, that people could scan, it would link to the rule. What do you, you, I mean, so something you could pull off, or do I need to do it, or?
I, I know, I've done it before, but this is, I mean, it's been a couple of years and I'm sure it's better now, but yeah, I mean, I
Well, talk to Stephanie, because she's been doing it for her meetings.
Oh, she, yeah, if she does it, then she knows how to do it. Yeah, I can talk to her.
Just have that one. Yeah, it just, just links to the rule. And that way, people, you don't have to have copies of the rule. People can just scan it on their phone.
Yeah, I think that sounds like a great idea.
Matt, you do that, they do that at some of the meetings, don't they? Educational meetings.
Yeah, I think Bethany, while we're still doing posters, but she also has developed a QR code that people can scan to sign in with, but I haven't used those yet.
So that was kind of underwhelming, huh?
We are still recording, but yes.
I'm kind of surprised.
Yeah, the one we did for the pesticide rule was I think it was just Carrie, Dave and I sitting in the second floor conference room. Hours.
Hey, if people cared, they'd be there, you know?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. There's outside of work hours.
Yeah. So we'll just, you know, hopefully we'll get some written comments.
I think we will, at least, yeah. But we've already received some. There's a, there's a stock that we'd like you to send out, everybody. Receive one of those, I assume. My only experience, just to finish up my earlier point with QR codes, is I did a QR code for Brooke on one for registration postcards. And then QR code, like they can expire. And then we can, yeah, they can go, I don't know, but wherever, somewhere else potentially. I'm sure that was a couple of years ago, but I'm sure that's all happened.
Give me a second.
Oh yeah, no worries.
I sent my need.
Thanks for joining, man.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wanted to hear what was going on. I just realized I had my mic.
Yeah.
My mic tilted up. Yeah, I just wanted to hear what's going on with what people are thinking out there.
Yeah, well, we haven't, you know, this was the first one, we'll see. Hopefully, like you said, or Richard Nelson said, hopefully the in-person one will be a little more lively. But maybe not.
I don't know if you want it too lively, but a little more would be good.
Folks in Vermont are kind of, you know, pass a turd, you know?
Yeah.
Which is okay.
Yeah, I kind of thought that must have been Heather Darby on earlier, but she didn't chime in. Maybe it wasn't her. It didn't, it didn't say it was a UVM
Right.
address, but maybe she was doing it through her own computer or something, I don't know.
Yeah. Did you recognize any of those other names?
No, I didn't, other than just Mr. Nelson.
Do we get anything in the chat?
And then Pat Bradley, I guess, was from, that's a radio station. I Googled it, WAMC.
Right. They didn't have any questions or anything?
No.
Yeah. Well, public service.
Yeah, the invite that came from AGR Pest, I put into my calendar. And then when I went to that invite, the link was a different Teams meeting for some reason. And, yeah, and it was just, it was only me and Samantha Alger was in it also, so I'm not sure how she got a different link. So then, when I realized it was after five and it was only the two of us in there, I left and went to our website and found the Teams meeting link there.
Yeah, as long as the website works.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know how that became a different link than what was sent to us from AGR Pest.
Who sent something from AGR Pest?
I don't know if that was, I don't know, I'm not sure who manages that, that I know that goes to Bethany, but I think it's also monitored by Stephanie and Dave, but I don't know for sure.
So Zach, what Matt was saying is he got an email with the wrong link.
Yeah, I could hear.
Any idea what that's all about? We need to test the links.
Yeah, I can do that now.
Especially all the ones we handed, you know, we sent out to all the ag groups, make sure they have the right links.
I think, well, I mean, the one that we use are on the website. Hey, Morgan, so those were
Hey.
Hi, sorry I'm late to the party, sorry.
This is it.
Not much of a party. We had sixteen total people. And like three people who spoke. Yeah. And we sat and stared at each other for a good forty-five minutes and then everybody started leaving. Richard Nelson said he had to go pick blueberries, so he was going. And that was it. Anyway, we need to, Matt was just saying he got an email with the wrong link. And but the one on the website works, so I'll figure out why. Wrong link was sent out.
Alright, so the
Zach, I think, are you still, you might still be recording.
Uh, that is correct, because honestly, I don't know what to do. Should I just stop it?
No. It's a public hearing. Somebody from the public may pop in.
Yeah, because I was thinking that maybe I could start it again, but I don't, I don't agree with that.
No, I would just leave it, just leave it.
Yeah. Yeah.
It'll be a very boring YouTube video. But, you know.
So the one
Could get a million hits, you know, we're gonna
Yeah. It's, yeah, it's like The Office. State of Vermont version. Alright, so the, the one on Thursday is correct, the one for the twentieth is correct.
Are you on the website?
Yeah, I think the ones, all the ones on the website are looking to be correct. Uh, the twenty-seventh is correct. And then, let's see. So that is the most reliable, and that is awesome. Yeah, the website is fun. The website is like
Well, how can, how can you tell they're correct? Like I had a, you know, the link in the email worked, but it took me to a meeting and it was just me and Samantha Alger from UVM had that same link for some reason. She was in that meeting as well. It was just me and her. Until like 5:03.
Uh, I guess I know it's correct because uh it says the date.
I mean, I guess if you're gonna, if you're gonna use that link when you start the meeting.
Right, exactly.
Then everyone's gonna be in the same one, so it's just somehow, somehow a different link got emailed out. But I guess.
Did you have any idea who sent the email out?
Well, that's what I was saying, it came from AGR Pest, so it could have been anyone who who does that. I always think maybe from Stephanie, I don't know. It was, let's see.
AGR Pest is Bethany, isn't it?
Well, multiple people have access to AGR Pest. I mean, I can look at it, I can send emails or respond to emails. I usually don't, but I think Dave has access to it, Bethany has access to it, Stephanie has access to it, I have access to it.
Yeah, it was Friday, July eleventh at 4:24 PM.
Huh. And who did it go to?
Um. Also to AG, oh, it was to AGR Pest News at list dot vermont.gov.
That's weird.
So I don't know who's on that list, but that must be everyone in the agency that's in the pesticide program, maybe, I don't know. AGR Pest News.
Well, I'll ask Stephanie about it, because I don't know how that happened.
Yeah.
It's a little concerning, but, but most of the people knew to go to this, because we had pretty, you know, we had a good turnout. And all the people I knew were gonna be on the call were on the call, you know?
Yeah. There is a meeting ID, so I can tell you the meeting ID that's well, that's listed in the email, but I wonder if the link is a different meeting ID. I don't know how to tell.
Can you forward that to me and Zach? We'll take a look at it.
Sure.
I'm looking at the one that's provided on the Secretary of State right now.
Oh, yeah, wait a minute, you know what, I just clicked on it and at the top it says Public Hearing Two. EMPs, so I wonder if that's the same link as the number two, which is Virgens. Yeah, that says Public Hearing Two. Okay, so the virtual one only, which is in the email, the link is sending us to the Virgens one, it looks like, because it's titled Public Meeting Number Two.
Yeah, so they, they should all have a title, one, two, three, and then the date.
Thursday, August fourteenth, yeah, okay. Yep, so just that first link is wrong, but, okay.
Yeah, if you forward that email to me.
Okay.
It looks like the ones in the SOS are all correct. Well, I I've only done one of those. Seeing that they went all It is a little confusing on the SOS, on their, on the rules board, I guess, and just because it's I remember talking to them about this as well, because they do like hearing one to just be virtual, but then for hearing two, it'll be, which is in Virgens on Thursday, it'll be the physical address, and then hearing three will be the same date, but it will be the virtual option. So instead of a total of five, there's nine, because four duplicate, one is virtual. Website is the best avenue.
So I only recorded or noted three comments, really. Is that what you got, Zach? And they're all by farmers.
Correct, yep. Yep, I thought that was interesting.
And actually, when we set this one up, I think kind of the thinking was this would be the one where the non-farmers would participate, you know, because it was virtual and
Yeah, that was my expectation.
But, whatever.
Way to come.
Yeah.
Honestly, nice tan, Matt.
Yeah, I have been getting a lot of sun lately. Yeah, I have been getting a lot of sun lately. It's my only chance. Morgan's brown too.
Sorry, Morgan, you look tan as well. Steve, you also look tan. Everyone looks tan.
I'm, I can't, I have no tan, and I'm sitting inside with my knee up, you know?
Yeah.
Uh, that Morgan, has your thing started as? Feel like it started yet, or?
Uh, tonight was the like parents' meeting, um, and then back to start on Thursday.
Uh, okay.
Um, getting there. Yep.
Did you, you guys didn't win the championship last year, right?
We lost in the championship game.
Eh?
Yep. Yep, so we got one more shot at it, but. The problem, well, it's gonna be harder, so they rearranged the divisions, like the size divisions this year. So, we got two. Formerly Division Two schools dropped to Division Three this year, so we're gonna have a, a harder road.
Hmm, that's too bad. Did you, have you watched Welcome to Wrexham?
No, I haven't yet, but it's, it's definitely on my list.
It's. It's worth it.
Okay.
And, uh.
Yeah.
It's all about promotion and relegation. You know, in English soccer, it's really interesting. Have you seen it, Matt?
No.
What's it called? Welcome to Wrexham, W R E X H A N. It's, you ever, did you ever watch Ted Lasso? It's like a real, it's a real, it's a real life Ted Lasso. It's unbelievable.
Oh, really?
Yes, it's just. Hard done. It's pretty amazing. Um, it's, um. Ryan Reynolds. And Bob McElhenney, you know, Ryan's the guy from Deadpool, or Rob McElhenney is the guy from, uh, It's Always Sunny in Philadelphia.
Oh, yeah.
And.
That's right.
They team up and buy a English soccer team. That's like down, down, you know, on the skids. And they. Turned into a winning team.
Yeah.
Have you seen it, Zach?
No, I know about it, I know, you know, a little about the story, uh, the meeting was.
It's really good.
It's like an historic, um.
Yeah, it's like one of the oldest soccer teams. Um. It's just, the way they do it's really, really good. Very, very well done.
We're gonna have to watch it. Sarah and I were, um. Just talking that, you know, we made the roster for who's playing this year, and we have. We have sixteen. Players. Uh, so that's not a lot, and seven of them are seniors. Woo. So next year, I'm gonna need a little bit of that magic, I think, so maybe I should watch it.
We should just call Ryan Reynolds.
Right. Yeah, you can come and promote our team.
Yeah, there you go. So Zach, you must, you did such a great job explaining the rule. That nobody had any questions.
You know, that's, that's exactly what it was, uh. I mean, yeah, uh. Okay. What it is, um. Kind of dry, but.
Yeah, so I mean, when we write the response, we'll say, hey, we had sixteen members of the public attend the meeting and only three comments.
Right.
You know? It's the way it is, that's what happened. You know?
Hopefully the, uh. Some of the, uh, people from earlier can make it to one of the meetings, and then, I'm not sure if they will. C and W R A.
Yeah. Well, they'll at least, I think, provide some comments. Uh, written comments. Uh. Think he froze up, Zach. There you go.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, was, was mine freezing during the, the meeting? Did you notice that?
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't notice that, no.
Huh, yeah, because it would, it might have been somebody else, and that's what it was, I was seeing, so it, it happened two or three times. Yes. It's dry. Here it is.
But I mean, you think about how many. How many different meetings do we have, Morgan, where we talked about the EMPs? It's like twenty something, wasn't it?
Um, yeah.
Getting close to twenty.
Seventeen is in my head somehow, but.
Yeah, I think more than that, but.
Yeah, and then, right, that was, I guess, then, then some, yep, you're right.
Yeah, so. Missing has been thrashed to death.
I did, um. So both Heather and Jeff Sanders said that they were going to attend. Um. Some hearings, so they, if they weren't in today, then maybe they'll be in future ones.
Hmm. So tell me more about the robots, just.
Uh, right, so.
Not as Matt and Zach know about it.
Yeah, so I went yesterday and kind of, um, toured around with Heather Darby and this company called Green. Greenfield Robotics, and they make. Basically a. Robot that goes in between, that's meant to go in between your. Rows of your row crops and to mow, so you don't have to cultivate or use herbicide. Um, the existing. Robots they have right now, just mow. They're developing one. That will, they were comparing it to like stripped tilling, so like that will. Like kind of take your cover crop. And lay, like kind of chew it up a little bit and then lay it down, but then will suppress the weeds even more. And like they kind of scrape a little bit, I think, so it's like they're kind of like scraping and chewing and laying down, and so it like creates mulch in the row. Uh, but that one's not ready yet, that grass bot. And then. Um. So what we learned was that the. The field. They kind, they really want the field to be planted with this. And I'm gonna forget the letters, RTK, I think. Which is like a more precise version of G, of GPS, so basically, like GPS is like satellite to machine, right? Like direct from satellite, but RTK goes from like satellite to a more local base and then gets pinged from the base to your machine. So it is a little more precise.
Well, it's also multiple, so it, it, it uses multiple signals, so you can get down to like a centimeter in accuracy.
Okay.
And, you know, of course, GPS has a certain error rate, but. The RTK, that's what they use for all the robotic tillers and tractors and stuff, so that they will stay on, on track.
Yep. So, um, so it sounds like that's not a common technology that we have in Vermont, is to like have a planter, like to plant a field using RTK. Um, and. So how like it works is basically they have, so right now they're not, maybe they're in. Um, maybe three states, and so now they're expanding to seven states, and so how they have been working is they send like their crew out. To do like a drone flyover of the field to map the field, and then that's what that map. Is what they like feed into the robot for them to know what the field is, um. But they mentioned because they're expanding to more states this coming or next season. Um, they would want to maybe like contract with more local drone pilots to teach them how to do that map, so they don't have to come to every state.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, going to, and then, so they also, so they are also. Rolling out like a purchasing plan instead of just leasing, so it's ten thousand dollars to lease a robot for the season.
Thousand dollars?
Ten thousand dollars to lease.
A robot?
One robot for the season.
You buy a lot of herbicide for ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, it can do seven acres a day. Um. But also though, like I think the battery is like every five hours.
Yeah, it seems.
Like it will come to the edge of the field and then. Wait for a new battery. And, um, so then. They, so they're also then they're offering a purchasing program, but I don't think I heard how much it is to purchase one, but they're doing like, you can purchase one, but we'll buy it back. Like basically recognizing that it will get better as they continue to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Update it, and so basically it's like if you do purchase one, they didn't want to punish those early adopters, so they were gonna do a buyback plan to like say, okay, if you purchase one, we'll buy it back. So then you can get the newer model. Um. So. I, 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 even with those challenges, I, I, I think. Heather was still very excited about it, um. So she, I think she's trying to get six, so how, so her strategy has been to get, uh, more like corporate sponsors. So she's going after Ben and Jerry's and Cabot and Stony Field and Organic Valley. Um, to like sponsor a robot. So to say like, okay, you know, like sponsor a robot at this farm, so that's kind of, we were going to farms that, so like we went to one farm that. Supplies, um, Stony Field yogurt, so it was an organic dairy, and so then they supply Stony Field yogurt, so that was like the idea to convince. Um, Stony Field to say like, okay, you can sponsor a bot at this farm that provides you your milk as kind of like a marketing.
Yeah.
There, um, advantage for them, so two people were there from Ben and Jerry's. Um, like they have a caring dairies program, so I hadn't known that, so actually that was a really good connection, so I talked with him and it sounds like. He, um, might have, it sounds like they poll their farmers and they poll them a little bit on Ag Plastic also. So, um, I'm gonna. See if we can. Get some more, maybe like we just use his information as our quote-unquote survey this year, rather than having to ask the same farmer. Survey every year is, I think, um. Hard to get participation, so, um, that's my goal, is to maybe have him come and speak, give an overview of Karen Gary's. Um, but then also kind of dig into that option as far as what they know from their participants. So that was a good connection to make. Um.
That's good.
And. And no robots are actually there, they have to do thirty, thirty inch rows.
Hmm.
Um, so it sounds like. Like the UVM planter, like Jeff Sanders, like his were all thirty inch, so that was fine, but we did go to one guy's farm. Who has a twenty inch planter, so. I don't, I didn't get a sense of how common or that, it, it sounded like his might be unique.
Okay.
Or older, or something like that, um.
Yeah. UVM is probably more standard, yeah.
Right, um, and so then, there, there was some discussion about the differences. Um. How, like the, when you would get it in the field, so like, you can't, once the corn gets too tall. It starts to shield it too much, so it won't be able to get its signal.
Right.
And then they're talking about that difference is that they. Had seen that problem in sunflowers, but sunflowers might have a thicker, you know, canopy kind of. But then they were talking about the difference, they've done a lot of trials in sweet corn, but. Didn't really have a ton in field corn, and field corn is planted at a higher density.
Uh, okay.
So that also was a little bit of difference between what they. Know and have their robots in currently. So that was just also like a little bit different. Um, the organic guy seemed excited about it.
Wasn't he in the company?
I think Greenfield Robotics. Green, uh.
There's so many of them now.
Okay, hold on, maybe, maybe I'm saying the wrong.
Uh, that's, I mean, pull up.
If they're in Kansas. Yeah, Greenfield Robotics.
So, oh, that's like Molly.
Yeah, I mean, they're cute little robots. They're pretty cute.
Yeah, they are. That's way cooler than what I've seen. Those are, those are, yeah, they're acceptable.
Yeah, they're kind of these like, yeah, like just like little beat up kind of little like.
Yeah.
Two, uh, headlights.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, they could extend their head, they could extend their battery life if they didn't have headlights on them. Do they know that?
Oh, yeah, so we asked why they had headlights, and they do, um. They basically said it was for like our seat, for visibility of people, so they know that they're in the field. Because they're like actively have blades, like.
Yeah. I can see that.
For a person to know that there's something in there.
The whole new horror movie, horror movie genre.
Children of the Corn. Uh, robots of the corn.
Yeah. I'll say something else, I'm not gonna say it right now, but, um.
Yeah.
And, uh, they. Do, I think, offer, uh. What do they call it? Like they could put a. Like a design on it. Forget what they're calling it, like a shrink wrap, but that's not what it's called.
Paint job, oh, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, like for thousands of dollars more, something like that, but so it's like, put Ben and Jerry, you know, like make it like a cat. On it, or like.
Oh, yeah.
So it can like be there, yeah, like branded little robot.
NASCAR race cars, you know, with all kinds of. Things on it.
Right.
That's funny.
So I guess, I don't know, Heather's asking for money, um. I don't. I don't know.
From the agency there?
No, just me.
Oh, really? Wow. Okay.
I don't know, so like, all my head is like, you know, AIB reduced pesticide, kind of could do it, but it's not like, um. Research pro, you know, that's the research project that if we frame it that way as an AIB charge to reduce pesticide use.
I mean, the.
It just seems impractical to me. You know, I just don't see how. How it could be economically viable. Um.
That's what, so I asked that, so I, hopefully, maybe I'll ping them next week to see what I can get for money, the money breakdown, because that's. I thought that they would have it as like part of their.
Yeah.
This is what it will get you, you know, like, that money talks, right, so, but it didn't quite seem like they had it, at least not off the top of their head, so. Um. I'd be interested to see that comparison. I'd be interested to see that comparison.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't seem, I mean, if all you're doing is mowing, there's still gonna be a lot of weeds.
Yeah, it's not getting anything within the rows. It's assuming there's nothing in the rows and which I guess there is gonna be the most plant pressure between the rows, cuz those are less shaded. So those weeds are gonna grow faster, but yeah, I know. It's like, I always think about the guardrail spraying and everything. If they could just have a machine that would go between each of the guardrail stakes, you know, and just clean it out.
That's how we mow the orchard. Is like you have a, a deck, right? And then
Right, the thing that swings in between.
Tree and swing back and hits, you know, bounces back, hits a tree and swings back.
Yeah.
And you catch the irrigation line and then it all flies everywhere.
Right. There's, there's some of them that, um, I don't know, it's burden robotics or something else, uh, that have like, um, sensors below and they can detect what is weed and is not a weed and goes over just above, you know, uh, the vegetables and then, uh, either some of them will have sprayers or some of them I think have like lasers.
Lasers, yeah, I know.
Yeah, yeah, they like zap them.
The AI recognizes the weed and burns it.
Yeah. Okay, another one now. Let's see if it's, uh, maybe not as advanced, but yeah, it's called uh, Earth Rover Meet the Claws. So it's less, lesser inviting. It's a little scary.
Have a battle.
Right. That used to be a big thing.
Yep. So, so how did they leave it, Morgan? They're just gonna give more information back to Heather and she's gonna see what she can do or?
Yeah, so I actually, I left at three cuz I had to come back to pick up my kids and um, so I wasn't there for like that final wrap up conversation.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but I can check in with um, either Heather or Jeff Sanders to see how they left it. I think Heather may have put a deposit down. I think she has some yeses from the corporate
Okay.
side. Um, so I there may be room for us to like see how it goes one season. You know, like if, if she has yeses from some of those businesses. And then see, but yeah, it's definitely worth checking back in with Heather and Jeff to look more logistics of it or a proposal kinda. I mean, we would need a proposal anyway to give money.
Yeah, but I, yeah, I need to know more about it. I just just on the face of it, it seems like it's not gonna I don't know.
I think organic, what, it did seem maybe organics because they're just running a tractor, right? Manpower and tractor just to cultivate. And he's not cultivating in between the corn anyway. Or in between his soy anyway. So it did seem like maybe there was a chance the bottom line would work out with organic. But I don't know.
Well, when that, when you said ten thousand dollars to rent it for the season, I pictured that being a business that would then go to multiple, multiple farms and till for them. You know what I'm saying? And then so using it for a whole season by traveling around, going to farms and cultivating with these robots for them. Then that might make it worthwhile. Also, being a startup, it's gonna be much more expensive than once, once they get going, the price is gonna come down too, I would think, making it more feasible.
Uh, it is my understanding that it was like ten thousand dollars and then that farm gets that robot.
Oh, yeah, okay. Huh.
But maybe I misunderstood. I, I, but I thought that was.
You know, if, if like a Bordeaux's or someone wanted to offer it as a service, then they could get that thing and then just have a dedicated truck go around, you know, with a guy and the batteries and
Yeah, almost same.
Tilling fields, you know?
Yeah, it's, sounds like, kinda like the drone operator.
Yeah.
You know?
I think they were working, I think they're close, if it's not already, they're close. I, it might ping your phone like when it's out of battery and comes to the edge of the field, it might ping your phone or at least they're close to that capability. So that otherwise, I don't know how you, you just have to be watching it to know that it came to the edge of the field.
Yeah. I mean, that's pretty common technology, a lot of, you know, like like my car, I can look at an app and see the battery charge and everything, whether the doors are unlocked or not, all that.
Well, yeah, we'll see what happens.
Yeah, so I can reach out to Heather and, um, Jeff to see if they have they wanna like give a little more, if they have it nailed down a little bit more.
We have time for one more public comment here.
Hey, Matt, come on.
I'm all for the ban. How's that?
Public comment.
I know, it's about the BMPs, not the ban, but.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to separate the two.
Yeah. People still wanted to comment on the ban, apparently.
At least we didn't get a comment about PFOS. Which is kind of what I was expecting, you know? Cuz that might happen yet.
Yeah. Met Pam's replacement from Maine uh, this past week.
What's that?
I met Pam's replacement uh, in Maine.
Oh.
The first, yeah. Um, yeah, interesting guy and they're doing a lot of work on this stuff. Yeah.
Yeah, well, PFOS is a big deal in Maine for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, interesting. Was that your first prep?
Second. Second prep.
Second prep, alright.
Yeah, it's good time.
Yeah, preps are, preps are good.
Yeah. On that one. Well, um, one minute, I, um, going to stop recording and, um, do you want me to send it off to, to Scott?
Yeah, you know.
Yeah.
Okay. But I mean, we, so Morgan, he talked to Zach about how to do that cuz we have to send it to Scott, but we need access to it still. So how does that work?
So, um, are you gonna make this? Are you gonna put the link? So, okay, so AIB, I make the placeholder on the website where I want Scott to put it. And I send him the link from Teams, so or SharePoint, SharePoint slash Teams, you know, that, so then you have the link to the recording. And you send that link to Scott and say, can you please put this on the YouTube channel? And then he just links that YouTube link to the, my placeholder on AIB. But are we putting this on a website? Or just for us?
Well, that, that, I think Scott wants to put it on the website.
Okay, so then that's, so that you have to send him the link. Um, and it's like, kinda just like a file. So I always change the permissions to make him be able to download or what, and edit whatever it says for the video link. And then you say, here's, and then he puts it on YouTube. And then it never goes away cuz it goes away eventually on it like expires, like recordings of meetings expire on Teams. So it goes away on Teams eventually. But then it's always on YouTube when Scott puts it on YouTube.
What about the transfer? Uh, you can stop the recording now cuz it's so.
Yes, I'm just, I'm trying to ask that. Uh, I'm gonna hit stop recording.
Or, yeah, and then record and stop recording. Yeah.
Stop. We're stopped.